Okay, this is the city council special work session. And the first item in the special work session is a report from our public works director. But before we get there, presenting is Bethany Brewer, our organizational development strategic initiative manager. Bethany.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're really excited to be here tonight and appreciate very much your time this evening. And excited to hear from Ryan in Public Works and Tom in IT. Really, these, this special work session and the ones following this summer are our chance to share from each department, really a story about the service that we provide to the community. Talk about specific examples, some analysis, really who we are, the service we provide, how it's evolved, and how our service really aligns with each of our strategic priorities in each department. So this is really sort of an extension of the organizational analysis conversation that we had back in May. Sort of that study and what we learned there. This really helps provide some more context to those things and really what is each department delivering to the community in terms of service. So really focused on our community and really will help continue to inform our budget conversations as we go through the summer. So over the next eight weeks, each of our departments are going to present a story of their service. When that's final, after our last conversation on August 16th, we're going to deliver you a written report that really will summarize kind of everything that we do to provide service to the community and kind of tie that all together nicely. So we're really just here to provide you as much information as we can about what we do.
Couple of notes, just housekeeping wise. You have hard copies of the presentations that both Ryan and Tom will take you through tonight in front of you. And for the community's benefit, obviously, we are live streaming on all of our platforms and on Burnsville Community Television. And our budget landing page, burnsvillemn.gov/budget will have not only the slide decks, but video recordings of these presentations. It's really the portal in which we're trying to encourage the community to follow along with the discussion in whatever depth they wish.
That's very good. Okay, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
You are on deck.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for letting me tell the story of Public Works and all the services we provide to the city. And really, we've been talking a lot of baseball and I guess I'm real excited to be batting leadoff tonight on this for our initiatives. And I'll try to tell our story the best I can. So we're going to talk about who we are, some of the changes we made, and how we align with our strategic priorities. Public Works is made up of seven different departments or divisions. We have the engineering fleet, natural resources, parks, maintenance, streets and drainage, utilities, and administration. We have seventy-three total full-time employees and we do hire a lot of seasonals throughout the year as well. So I thought I'd use the...
Do all of that in, with seventy-three FTEs? I mean, I see, I pulled up the public infrastructure also, so.
That is accurate. We're very efficient. I appreciate you pointing that out. So we do have seventy-three full-time equivalent employees and, like I said, a bunch of seasonals. And we do take care of all these different services for the community. I thought maybe it'd be good to lead off with what the American Public Works Association defines Public Works as. I won't read verbatim every other one, but maybe this one I will. The combination of physical assets, management practices, policies, and personnel necessary for government to provide and sustain structures and services essential to the welfare and acceptable quality of life for its community. I really like the word essential in there. The city just, we can't run without the things that Public Works provides. We're essential to quality life and welfare at the same time. And basically, we manage all these different assets that people need to go about doing in their everyday life. And we also own things like parks maintenance where maybe that isn't necessary to your, necessary to survive, but it is necessary for have a good quality of life. So we're essential and also for quality of life in Public Works. So we'll get into each different division. Engineering Department, we plan for infrastructure and also complete the replacements. So the same staff that's planning and budgeting all that is the same people who are delivering the projects. We manage the entire special assessment process for the whole city, be it sports streets or Public Works improvements, but also for things like the code enforcement or delinquent water bills. We do the administrative effort on that as well. Right-of-way management, so whenever you think of private utilities going in the boulevards, we manage that process and the permitting and making sure it gets put back together correctly. Utility permitting, this is private developments occurring where they go in and put their own utilities in. We manage, or manage that process and how they connect into the city system. Traffic calming, we're definitely in traffic calming season. Lots of comments coming in these days about speeds and that kind of thing. We handle that. Erosion control, once again, largely private development occurs. They, the soils get exposed and all of a sudden it rains and sediment ends up in the street. We're here to prevent that and make them do their job if they're not. And then we also have to a bunch of GIS and asset management work, which is new in the last ten or fifteen years. So it's something that we've changed. Finally, just thinking, we do play a major role in the election process as well. Two of our staff are key to putting on the elections. Not as key as Michelle, but nonetheless, we do help with those. The fleet department, it's not by accident that we show a fire truck up there. We provide the service, the fleet services for the entire city. Police, fire, all of Public Works. I think IT has a van that we look after.
We do.
We do. So we got one vehicle over there. And building inspections, all those different areas have fleet. We provide all the services for that. That includes repairing the vehicles. Sometimes that's in-house. Sometimes we have to take and have that done in a private place, depending on different things. We purchase all the vehicles and equipment. Talked with our fleet manager today, trying to figure out why we haven't got a fire vehicle here in a year. And he was literally telling me that Ford and GM right now, if it says a municipal person or municipal client wants to buy a vehicle, they literally will not supply it. They're all going to dealership. So we've tried to go around that and then went to a dealership to attempt to buy it from them. And as soon as it said the city of Burnsville, they won't take it. So it's so difficult right now to purchase vehicles and equipment. They're, they're, if it's on the lot, maybe you can. But if you're trying to get one that's not there already, they literally won't sell it to us. So just getting some of the description, there'll be more fleet things going on with increases in costs and that sort of thing. But purchase of vehicles right now is a very complex thing. You were all through the fire depart, or the fire truck, right? I mean, two years to deliver, the price went up twenty-five percent. It's a big, big challenge in fleet right now, just to get the vehicles. So you're having to spend a lot of time on that. We manage the entire fuel system and for the city. Parts room, asset, fleet has its own asset management system that they use to keep track of everything they're doing. And then administrative things such as licensing and insurance. Also, the fleet, there's a staff member who spends, I'd say at least half his time making the maintenance center operation go. He's, he knows the building better than anybody, so we, our people do that. And you'll see on many of those snow and ice control assistance. Fleet personnel, both fix broken vehicles as well as are in the vehicles, plowing streets as well during those large events. So it's interesting time to be in the fleet business, for sure. Natural resources, a very diverse group of things happening here. As we all know, we're very proud of our sustainability, so we have our sustainability coordinator in here. So we certainly don't accomplish everything in sustainability here, but it is coordinated via the natural resource department and our new sustainability coordinator, who we met. I'm very confident she's going to fill and pursue and do a great job. Forestry and landscaping is in this area. So the city forester takes a lot of calls about things like Emerald Lashport, which is also going pretty, it's very much here in Burnsville at this time. We're also maintaining all the trees that the city owns and also community landscapes, such as the heart of the city. Spend a lot of time there on the rose bushes and rain gardens and those kinds of things. We manage Dakota Valley Recycling, which is Apple Valley, Lakeville, Burnsville, and Egan's recycling communication efforts and events. So we house them, they're our employees, but it's twenty-five percent to each of those four communities for things like shoe collection or pumpkins afterwards, or maybe it's the Christmas lights we collect. So, and then we do all the communication on recycling as well. Burnsville manages that whole thing. That is all one hundred percent funded by Dakota County's waste abatement funding. Daryl, and the natural resources manager, he is the executive director of the Black Dog Watershed. So we run and administer that organization. It makes sense. We're by far the biggest area-wise in Black Dog Watershed, but it's, definitely takes a fair amount of his time. Upland Wildlife Management, so this is the, as well as you imagine, our trees and when we make Terrace Oaks Park into a oak savanna, that's all what those folks are doing. And then, you know, deer management, geese management, maybe some people like turkey management. We aren't there yet. But all these different types of things that we do there. And then surface waters, similarly, we're out, just started our Crystal Lake Curlie Leaf Weed Harvesting now. We manage the, we've had some incredible successes here, getting a couple of lakes off the, not endangered. It is off the impaired list of MPCA. So we've had a lot of luck with that. We've also had a lot of funding to make that happen. So we're definitely proud of where we are from managing the surface waters. A lot of invasive species prevention, both in upland and surface waters, be it Eurasian milfoil or buckthorn, all those kinds of things we're managing and trying to keep a handle on. And our foresters and community landscapers, they also participate in snow and ice control. Park maintenance, I think this is a picture of the Black Dog Field down at, down by the river. It's a beautiful picture of that facility. Definitely representative of the very first topic there, field turf irrigation management. It's very diverse. We have all kinds of different areas. Some turf, we let the grass go to six inches and it just, you know, if it doesn't rain, we're not having to do it. And the next one, something like that, we're going to take very good care of. So it's a very diverse and not a simple thing to do. It's a pretty complex thing to manage all the different turf areas we got. This could also be at facilities. Irrigation systems are complex. Park reservations, so whenever someone takes a reservation at a park, we're there ahead of time cleaning it and making sure it's acceptable. All the different amenities that we have, fences, lights, signs, those kinds of things, we take care of those. Garbage recycling has exploded during the pandemic. It's, used to be five days a week and we show up on Monday morning and then it'd be, you could pick it up. Now, we are out there seven days a week, Saturday and Sunday, picking up garbage full rounds because the parks are so much used during differently. And we just can't let the garbage pile up right next to all the bins. So, or they fill our recycling up with garbage and then that doesn't work either. So it's turned into a seven-day deal. Mowing, you know, you think of a field like that, but we also mow all the boulevards and all the medians that are ours. We mow the boulevards that are hardship. We either mow the facilities that we have or we contract for that out, so it's a very big operation. Our the city's managed by the Parks Department, a lot of wintertime recreation amenities. And once again, Parks helps us a lot in snow and ice control, including their own facilities and parking lots and that kind of thing. So this group has very much been affected by the virus, or COVID virus. And it's really put a lot of pressure on the, on the park system in general. Streets and drainage, so this is when I move snow and ice control operations to the top of their list because that is the main thing. We're very, very proud of how we do that in the city. Wherever I go and I talk, you know, from Burnsville or you're in Public Works, whenever we go to your town, it always looks good real fast. So we're proud of it. We do a great job. So we also help in the heart of the city with the street department, be it the boulevards or cleaning the decks, all the snow removal and that sort of thing. Pavement maintenance and sweeping, so this is potholes, milling fill, or now they've improved to the point where they can actually pave streets from curb to curb, which is a pretty exciting thing. It's helped our pavement scores out a lot. Vegetation management, so we're trimming trees along trails and sidewalks and those kinds of things. We also in charge of the drainage system, so ponds and lakes and drainage structures and lift stations and outlets. All these things that make, when we have a big rain, that our system can handle it and that it's not flooding people out. So we have a good handle on how that goes. And I'm proud of them for, we're, we make it through these storms without having lots of areas flooded out. Streets is really our jack-of-all-trades group as well. They go and set up all the election sites that we go and do and they're, they're doing all the other sort of things. When we built their garden last year in Grove Burnsville, they actually did that. And then it was, I'll come back to, I had one thought on that one, but, and then streetlights and signs. We have a whole bunch of signs. We actually have a sign guy who basically his job is to take care of signs on a year-round basis. Obviously, if there's something else glaring that needs to get done, he'll help with that. But we do have one person, that's all they do. And then our streetlights is a constant maintenance subject that we get lots of calls on. And emergency, if you think of things that happen, Public Works emergencies, streets and drainage is always one of the first people who get called in to help there. Our utilities, we, here we produce our number one saleable product, for sure. We produce potable water. As we've talked about, it's a very complex process. We have a surface water plant and a groundwater plant, and the product that comes out, it mixes the two together. Potable water distribution, we also distribute the two all of our customers. And our system, once again, is very complex on this one as well. There's, we have seventeen different pressure zones because of the different elevation drops that we have in town. Apple Valley, for instance, has two. So our system to get water out, to distribute the water to our customers is very complex. Waste water collection and routing, so we deliver the water and then they do want the water to go away after they've used it. So we do collect the water as well. And when we do that, we get that over to the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, who pipes it over to Egan, to their Seneca Plant, and treats it before discharging into the Minnesota River. For the luxury of that service, we pay about five million dollars to the MCS each year to treat our water. We use, collaborate, or maybe dependent upon IT department to operate the system with a computer system so we can see how all our systems are working. Are there any alarms going off? Are the levels going up or down? Is temperatures getting too high? All these kinds of things. And then we use a system called SCADA to do that. That allows us to monitor our system remotely, very effectively. Utility locating is very busy now because there's lots of excavation going on. So we got to go and out and make sure that our systems are located and don't get damaged when people are doing excavations. Utility Department does a lot of their own projects and they manage those and also put together budgets. And we have a lot of service calls here for service. And then we do snow and ice control assistance and utilities as well. Administration, we, we said we have a big operation. So we do have a group that is administering the department, including providing department direction, customer service. We deliver our safety program, deliver a lot of projects, plan for them and budget. We provide our asset management and GIS services that we do for the rest of the department. Budget, our, many of our employees are organized, so labor relations with the Human Resource Department. And then we put on events like our Public Works Open House, our participation in night tea night and those kinds of things. So I like to think that Public Works employees are also first responders. We do a lot of emergency response. You just got pitched up there, last year's tornadoes that took down a bunch of trees for our summer storms. Snow and ice control is an emergency that we take on. Many things can happen, the water sewer, backups, water main breaks, those kinds of things. So we're available twenty-four seven on that. Support public safety, I think there was one time we actually plowed a way around a house so the fire department could get to the back of it. I believe we did that before. So we do support those and our friends in public safety. Lots of things come in in the parks and then, you know, fleet vehicles break down whenever and we will come in and repair those. Changes in growth, our park system has never been busier for the reasons I stated earlier. Right now, we have a lot of staffing challenges. People changing careers or changing places to work. So we're trying to do everything we can to keep people, but if there's definitely some turnover. Customer service expectations increased with the virus came in. A lot more people were at home and they were cranky. So we got a lot of different calls that we hadn't gotten in the past and that leads to a lot of follow-up. So it's, it really has changed how we do things and the types of things that we're spending our time on. Increase in costs have all gone up. We've changed the way, we now contract out for mowing on remote parks. We contract out for our bathroom cleaning, different things like that, that are maintenance that we typically would have done. And then our work schedules have changed. For instance, now in maintenance groups, they can work four-ten's and they have two different groups. One works four-ten's Monday through Thursday, the other works Tuesday through Friday. And that, three years ago, was not a deal. So we've adjusted along, you know, office staff has a flexible working environment as well. So some of the stuff has led to some nice changes for our employees as well. Let me see, I'll try to pick some highlights of this one. On the customer expectations, I'll go down to the fourth one, community outreach. There's been, there's a lot more requests for outreach to the public when we're, let's say, doing a project. We used to maybe have one open house here and now we're spending three of them out into the community, which is great. We getting like a lot of different comments that we never would have got. But the amount of effort to put those on triples, triples to do that because we're having to gather everything up, go out, put it all together. It's a much more difficult thing to do. It's the right thing to do and we're going to continue with it, but it takes a lot more effort to do it. Technology and advancements, I talked about staffing. I'll just touch on the trainee program that you approved for us. It's been extremely successful with the staffing challenges. We've, we now have three trainees and we thought for a while, okay, they can be here for two years. Are we going to be training people to go elsewhere? And now it's turned out, this almost as soon as we get a trainee and they're in a couple of months, there's a opening for them. So we've, it's, we've had to hire trainees a lot, but it's helped us fill our full-time opening positions that have been happening. And then multimodal transportation has also really changed into a thing. We used to do our street projects, you would repave it and fix broken curbs. Now we're looking at how are people going to use the system a lot more closely? And how can we meet everyone's transportation needs? So once again, one hundred percent the right thing to do, but it takes a lot more time and effort to do it. The Agent City, I'll just go with the park system. Garrett's, bless him, has taken on doing a full asset review on our park system because there are so many things that have aged out, aged out, maybe that's a little strong. But are in need of maintenance and we just, A, can't get to it from a dollar standpoint and B, can't get to it from a personnel standpoint. So it's just been something that is true on all those different bullets there, where things are getting older. We're not a young community. We're not old, but we're certainly not young. And there's plenty of things that need attention out in the system and that take more time. As they get older, they take more time to maintain. Okay, I'll try to get into this slide in some detail because I think this really tells our story on some of our staff concerns. So the little brown boxes are how much water we produce. And so don't just look at it as a factor, not try to figure out how much it is in the day. And the total and the lines going up and down are the amount of Public Works employees at those various cities. So you can see there are cities that are comparable to ours, that are market cities. And this slide is five to seven years old, so it's not perfectly up to date, but the ratios and all that kind of thing would be accurate. So we are way on the left. We produce the most water of all those cities that are shown on here. And the system that we use to produce it is the most complex of any of those cities. We have two different plants, it mixes it together, all the different pressure zones we have. And then we have a huge bulk customer as the city of Savage. So as you can see, then, we are not staffed as high as many of those. There are some different things that would make it look like the city of Brooklyn Park is almost double ours. They likely have something else added there. But the fact is, we produce a lot more water and are not staffed extremely high in the area. The green box is just how many employees we have at our water treatment plant. So we have, we can only get two employees out there with our current amount of utility employees and still keep the system running. Yet we are running the most production and most complicated system we have. We do need help in our utility system to make, reduce our reduction, start to do some things proactively. Right now, it's just putting out fires, not literally fires at the water treatment plant, but just trying to keep it all going. So does this slide make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
It does? Okay.
But it also tells the story of how you have been short-staffed with a highly productive product that we put out.
Yes, that is correct. Yep. I've told the story to you before. We have thirteen total employees in utilities at the city of Burnsville, put out that much water. Egan has twenty-five in utilities. Granted, they also take care of the storm drainage. But it's, it's not an apples-to-apples thing. And we do need to, we need some assistance in that area.
Yeah, two-hundred-and-eighty-five miles.
Yes, we are, I can...
Water lines.
Right, yeah. It's not just the treatment plant, you're correct.
I remember when I first got elected, Ryan took me on a tour of our assets. And walking into that treatment facility, it's this massive building and there's two people in there. And that was almost four years ago.
That's two people if both people are there that day, right?
Yeah.
And we've had situations where, well, you can imagine, for any whatever reason, training, vacation, sick. All of a sudden, we got one person there.
Yeah.
And what happens, if something happens to that, that person who is there, you know what I mean?
We don't have redundancy.
We don't, no. If we, we're trying to get at least for sure one there, what we'd end up doing is having a supervisor and then one person shown to operate each plant, but then they would be cross-trained to help each other.
Yeah, but with the grace of God, we haven't needed.
Yeah. Grace of God and Tom's SCADA system has really helped us out.
Try not to take any credit for that.
Well, you should take some credit for it. You should.
Dad K.
My wife texted me earlier and said, step away from that microphone because it's really loud. So I put it up. I don't know what, if the control room can give us a sign, blink a light or something if this is louder. I'm curious because there was a time when businesses and, and we certainly consistently pursue technology to reduce our dependency on workers. And we've been running for so long with two people, I just wonder, and then I look at like Minnetonka, who has a lot of people. Is our systems more advanced from a technology standpoint? It can operate and run without having a lot of workers having to do something to keep it going? Is that what we actually got to at the water plant? I, I just, I almost feel like there's an efficiency story to tell that's a really great story that other cities should maybe look at. Or are those two workers busy constantly because they're really doing three or four people's jobs, but there's only two of them to do it? You know what I mean?
I would say it's a combination of both. We are very, very efficient. We have to be, right? We don't take it all lightly that we're supplying water to more than a hundred thousand people and how many, a hundred thousand people and how many businesses. So we're going to do whatever it is we're going to do. The plant keeps rolling, you know. We can turn it off and that sort of thing, but of course, we don't...
Because there's so much automation, right? It just runs, right?
There is a lot of automat, yeah.
And so really, are we looking to add somebody just to be there in case? And then what would they do if nothing goes wrong?
There is many things over there that are not occurring now from a proactive maintenance standpoint that we would do. We, and we'd also, we actually have a, a separate asset management system that virtually has been unimplemented minus one or two little things that we would start using. And to make us more effective, it would also greatly reduce our risk on something going wrong by having another person there. So we have an employee each, each week who carries the pager for, if something goes wrong and they have to make rounds. And so there's, we have like three or four people total who can really understand the plant. It's also a large burden on them because each time something happens at the plant, even if another employee has it, they have to call over, what's going on here? What should I do here? So it's tough for those employees. It's, it's definitely a burnout issue. It's almost, I'm not saying we don't do anything proactively out there, of course we do. But there is, we could be doing a lot more proactive things if we had another person to assist there and accomplish the many tasks that, you know, I can't quantify it, but arguably, we would reduce repair costs and those kinds of things if we were able to get ahead of some of these things. We'd be able to take more, do more testing of our system to make sure everything's functioning well, water quality, all those sorts of things. More of the filtering, those, so there's, it's a multitude of things that we would be able to do and be more effective.
And that's, I suppose that's came out of the employee study, the specific role and responsibility. And that's, I suppose that's came out of the employee study, the specific role and responsibilities that an added person that you're looking for would actually take on as been identified in a job responsibility.
That is one of the two positions that are shown for 2023 funding that would be requested.
So it's one, said simply, it's one of the FTEs that was identified for Public Works immediately in 2023. This was an area that our consultants were alarmed by. And I would, I would say to your point, Councilmember Keely, yes, there is an incredible amount of efficiency and a story to be told in this particular work group. I will also say that, without, without picking on them too much, this is also a work group that I heard loud and clear in my first three months in talking with them that is incredibly burned out and incredibly concerned about a lack of redundancy and the risk that that creates in our water utility. And I would share that. I would share that perspective. It's part of the reason, again, why we included those particular FTEs so early in the plan. To Ryan's point, there is the, it's both. There's the efficiency element. I would also argue, argue that there's the effectiveness element, that we've probably gotten so much out of those particular FTEs, that there's not much left to give. And I think that that, that becomes the balance equation in some of what we're looking at here operationally. Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. And you did talk about some of the automation. I don't know if Tom, if you want to fill any of those gaps about how we are using technology.
Because I remember when we put in all of the new systems and we updated all of the software for the plant, because we were so behind. And isn't that the same time we put the fiber in the ground to connect everything?
Yes. The council made a significant investment in the water utility platform and automation capabilities back in 2008, when they approved a significant project. And that allowed us to upgrade not only to utilize the latest technology available to us for SCADA platforms, but also fiber optic infrastructure to connect all of our primary water utility sites in a redundant fashion, so we could provide excellent communication and reduce costs from our ongoing former method of communicating with SCADA. In addition to that, over the years since, there's been several investments that continue to be made in terms of our infrastructure. One of those I'll touch base on a little bit later, but our advanced metering infrastructure and other tools that our, our staff have been able to use in terms of automation. And in some ways, this is my opinion, we've been able to automate so much that we've focused on automation and not necessarily staffing to take that on ongoing. And it's allowed us to keep levels of staffing at lower, but at some point, and we're at that point, I feel that we have to address the staffing levels.
I would, I would say anecdotally as well, it, it's, it's part of the way that we do business, right? We've become accustomed to the efficiency of, of our staffing levels. But I, I will also tell you, if there's a, if there's a SCADA issue, these two gentlemen are not thinking strategically about, about Public Works operations or council direction related to technology. They're, they're rolling up their sleeves and figuring out, how do we fix that particular technology issue? And I would say, as the organization continues to evolve, one of the, one of the things the council asked us for was an assessment on the organization. And I will tell you that the more time that these folks spend at the table with you and with the community, which is absolutely the priority, and from my perspective, the direction we need to go, the less time Tom and Ryan are going to have to be able to roll up their sleeves and deal with those technical issues. That's really where the, the staff effectiveness and the, the right use of the right people and their talents and their strengths becomes important from, from my perspective.
I would agree.
Thank you.
And for clarity, of the seven positions identified in Public Works, four of them are, would be utility, in the utility department. If we're able to accomplish all that, they would have great improvements throughout the whole organization, though, from the whole Pub Works organization as those employees, you know, a treatment plant operator could help us with snow plowing on, on that particular day. If we can get another admin person, they would then be able to improve our entire operation from an administrator's standpoint. Right now, it's, some of our challenges, like with our safety program, we don't have anyone dedicated to that, but yet we still put it on. So we'd be able to do things like this to make ourselves better in key areas like that as well. So I won't go on any longer, but just note that, you know, we, even if, if we were to get four more there, we'd probably still be on the low end of the amount of utility employees in any of these communities. All right, how do we fit in with strategic priorities? I'll go through these quickly. Portable water system, we're just talking about it. Safety there is arguably just as important as safety anywhere else. Our water has to be safe, or what kind of community do we have? Traffic and, traffic management and pedestrians, obviously extremely important. We, we work with our friends in the police very closely on that. And then our park system, the, the kids have to be safe using the, the fields and the, and the playgrounds and that kind of thing, or once again, our parks are not effective. Community engagement, talked a lot about this one already with more things that we're doing there. And then we're doing things like putting on the Pub Works Open House, which is really fun to do. And we are more engaging with the community than we've ever been. Organizational culture, we do have a vision plan in Pub Works. It's been a little slow going on that now, but we're really trying to make it so it is the single best place that a Pub Works employee could work. And Bethany and her folks have been really helping us out by actually coming out to the maintenance center, so that some of our employees who may not want to come here have an opportunity to participate in those things. Community vibrancy, the only real specific thing listed in all of our strategic plans is the Heart of the City Framework Plan. We're overseeing that. Winter lighting obviously makes us more vibrant. And the street improvement program, yes, we get great new roads out of it, but it really makes our neighborhoods more vibrant when we're down there. When it goes from those roads that are all beat up to something brand new, it really changes our neighborhood's feel. So we're very proud of that aspect of the, of what we do. Sustainability, we coordinate those. We do also manage all the green areas, as we discussed. And then I just want to point out, we really try to take a targeting initiative when it comes to sustainability. Where can we get our most bang for our buck? Trying not to do expensive things that get us very little. Where can we do more, lesser costly things to get more value? Infrastructure, I'm just going to go over this slide, or I won't spend any more time on it. That really defines, that is truly Public Works, planning, replacement, operation, and then implementing new assets. It's hard to see this one, but this gives a really good description of all the things we have. Some of the highlights on there, as the mayor just referenced, 280 miles of water, main pipes. We have 17 lift stations, two treatment plants, 7,000 signs, I think it is, 10 lakes. That's kind of a cool thing about Burnsville. We're definitely a city of lakes, three big water towers. I could go on and on, but it's a lot of stuff to manage.
We take care of 12,300 trees.
Thank you. Well, with EAB, it's a few less, but, but it's, yeah. Trees are enough stuff in asset as well.
And thank you for sending that to us also, because that's what I pulled up, but you also have it in the background.
Right.
Did you draw that picture?
No, luckily, we had someone, yeah. We did this in-house with an employee back in 2016, yeah. They did a very nice job.
It has the new logo on the water tower, so there was some foreshadowing there.
Right. It was pre-YouBelongHere, though, so if we update it, we'll, we'll put that on there as well. But as you can see, I guess in the far right side, you can see the, the Corey Lake, the first surface water, and then the rest of it goes down to the aquifer. But I could spend an hour on this slide, but I don't think you want me to.
What's nice is that this slide tells a whole lot of the story that you just told with regard to the, what you take care of. These are the assets of the community that's under your domain.
Yes. Was it 435 cul-de-sacs? Imagine plowing 430 cul-de-sacs 30, 40 times a year.
430 cul-de-sacs in the city of Burnsville.
One of them can take an hour sometimes to plow.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, some of our challenges, this gets in the aging one. I just took this picture this morning. This is in the Heart of the City. And we just have some assets that are literally crumbling. I don't know, it's really just describes some of where we're at. Other things, you know, we got looking really well, but you know, some of these great things we've done in the past are aging and need attention. But I already talked about the parks, the demands on projects. They're more complex. There's more of them as things get older. We, one of our FTEs we're looking for is a project manager. We just, we have things that aren't done because of cost, and we have other things that don't get done because we don't have a staff person available to do it. And that's just the, what, where we're at. Whenever we're putting a new asset into the system, we have to manage it. Inflation's been a really big ordeal. And we get all these cool tools from technology as well, from IT. And sometimes we, well, I like to blame Tom, but I don't know if it's his fault or not, but sometimes we don't always get a ton of training on them. So we try and use all these technology things, and then how do we, how do we figure out how to use them? They, they do bring out a person once a week on Wednesday mornings. When we asked our staff what they wanted most was a full-time IT person at Public Works to help us with all these things that we're doing. So I don't think that's going to be the solution, but we, it's, it's, it's definite issue that we get cool IT things, and then it's hard to figure out how to use them.
To that point, the technology's only as good as how you leverage it. And if you don't have staffing time and resources to train on it and know how to use it to its best ability, the technology becomes less valuable and less useful. And then you end up duplicating technology, because you buy other solutions that may already do, do the same thing that you already have. And so it just becomes a cyclical thing, a catch-22 per se. So Ryan's correct. We try to do our best to provide training resources as much as we can, but that's, that's a struggle area for us, too, in a lot of the technology that we deliver.
I think we've seen that in the result of the organizational analysis, right? We've, we've put the initial effort using some existing resources into the organizational development function. It's been important through us, through initiatives like Burnsville University, to try to start to centralize and be intentional about not only those initial but ongoing training needs throughout the organization. So frankly, Tom's group can focus on what Tom's group is best at, which is delivering great IT service and support, and can have other resources to collaborate with throughout the organization to then deliver things like training, to make sure that, that Ryan's folks are up to speed on how to best use those systems.
Yeah. And you know, COVID taught us all how important it is for us to have the right equipment and the technology that we need to function. We can have all of the, yeah, and we didn't have very, we didn't have appropriate equipment.
Well, it won't steal Tom's thunder, but it, it taught us that we can pivot pretty quickly and deploy hardware very well in a very short period of time.
But with supply chain.
But we also learned that, that, that requires additional support. Again, back to the Public Works Department, training on that equipment. How do we best use it? Additional technology, how do we use it to begin with? And then as people cycle through the organization, how do we onboard? How do we, how do we take people out of those systems from a security perspective? The, the evolution has been pretty dramatic.
We say we like technology, except when it's not working, because we don't know either how to use it, or it's scratched on us.
It's working when it's quiet.
It looks like the mayor's joining the, pick on IT department, maybe with the rest of us, so it's a, it's a fun.
It's contagious, Ryan.
But yes, all joking aside, they did an utterly fantastic job of deploying whatever asset we had when we all had to go work from home. It was, it was amazing how fast and quickly and effectively they, they did deploy all those things for us, so. Aspirations, where do we want to be? What do we want to do? What, what, what aren't we doing that we really want to? I talked, discussed it, but we really want to reduce our risk in our utility system operations. It's, it, it's just too important, in my opinion, that we change our staffing model to a place where we have some redundancy, where we can be effective and have the increase in proactive procedures that we want to do. We want to be less reactive and more proactive. And certain areas, we are able to do that more effectively than others. If you talk to the park department right now, they're, it's just all reactive to what's, what the calls they get in and just trying to do what they're working on. We'd love to be more proactive on some of our park buildings and maintaining those. Dedicated project management, like I said, the same people who are putting the capital improvement plans together and budgeting are the same people who are, are putting the projects out the door. They do a fantastic job. People like myself, Garrett, are actually project managers as well. Let's hear, when we, when you get the fleet study, here, there's going to be a, a number of recommendations that we do there. We'd love to be able to do those, so it'll be interesting to, to get everyone's feedback on that. Asset management advancements, we got this great tool, and we're using it effectively, but there still is a lot more we could do. And then stable employment is something we're definitely trying to get so that we, employees we have, we really want to keep them. And how do we get people when they're here to get up to speed as quickly as possible? So we have some big aspirations, and we want to do all this stuff incredibly well. We, we do a lot of things very, very well at this point. And these are some of the areas that we're looking to even improve upon more. I think that was my last slide. I don't think I was fast, but.
Very good.
You were effective.
Okay.
Very good.
This is the end of the commercial voice, I thought.
We also said we wouldn't ask too many questions. Clearly didn't do that.
That clearly didn't happen, yes.
Stand for any more questions?
Can you just tell me what that last picture was of?
That was, we aspired to have a better Nicola Commons Water feature.
Yeah.
And we, we have, we're successful. I think this was when the concrete was actually taken out and put in.
Remember the whole year that we didn't have Nicola Commons Park?
Yeah, but are those the new water features just out, not in the ground, or what are those?
Yeah, it's just waiting to be installed and stuff.
Waiting to be implemented.
I had never seen that before.
They are not in that location now. Your, your time has been gone, and you're not going to ever get that opportunity, unfortunately, so.
Since you brought it up, question. What time does the water feature in the main, in front of the stage area shut down, where the water features in the river continue on, or river or stream, whatever you call it?
Talking about the dancing waters?
The ones that come straight out of the ground that are in the center quarter. What time do they auto shut off? For the day?
We went back and forth on this last year when we set it up. It shifts at like 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock.
Where the, the, those center ones no longer will turn on, but the stuff in the, you know, the little features in the stream will continue.
It creates a different evening experience for.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And then at 10 o'clock, I think there's another shift as well.
Gotcha. The, in, in these hot days, 6 o'clock's kind of early.
I was wondering on the hot days if they, it's, because it, there's manual, you can even push that little button and then.
It doesn't work after a certain point.
We'll make sure we get some clarity.
You can't, you can't push the button, Madam Mayor. The red lights flash when the system is shut, that section of the feature down.
When it's shut down?
Yeah, just like at Cliffend, you can push the button all you want, but after it shuts down at now 9 o'clock, right, it won't turn back on again. And I found that out at Nicola Commons Park at about, well, I don't know, 7? Might have been just here after 7. So I thought maybe it auto shut off at 7, because the concrete was still wet, but I couldn't tell how long it had been off. But I, I was sitting there, it was still pretty sunlight, and I thought, hmm, it was a little early to shut it off, but that was just me.
And don't quote me on the exact, it is, there are different settings set for it. We can provide you with a follow-up on what happens at each change of time.
I'll make sure I included my update this week.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, it's, maybe, and I totally get the evening, because we stayed there till 8:45. And, and having that dry, right, in that center area, the, the circle in front of the stage, after a certain point, does make sense. I just, I kind of thought 6 or 7 might have been a little earlier than, because the kids still wanted to play in the water. And they could play in the stream, but they're missing all those other features. But I just want to know what it is. Thank you.
I think if there aren't any more questions of Ryan, he needs to go take care of his son and family.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll be up for six minutes.
I took up a lot of your time, Tom. I don't know what that's about.
So now, this is IT presenting, so he should have all the cool gimmicks and electronic stuff.
Yes, it's a very common topic.
Does it have music?
Like, I would expect him just to shoot the presentation from his phone, take over whatever screen he needs to, and.
I'm just going to bring in Oculus goggles.
It's on the list. We just haven't quite made it there. We just haven't quite made it there.
Well, you know, as the head IT guy, he's got to, you know, impress more than everyone else with the IT stuff, toys, right?
Ryan sets the bar. I guess I can improve on that. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having me tonight to present the services that IT provides to the organization and, and around the conversation of how we align to the strategic priorities and the services that we provide through in combination and collaboration with the departments that you'll hear from after me. Similar format is what you heard from Ryan. I'll discuss who we are, how has our service delivery changed over the several years, and how do our services align with our strategic priorities? Who we are. So we have some faces to names in our little bubble. We're only, we're a smaller group, centralized, and we provide services. We're nine full-time employees with one temporary part-time employee, Sophia. We've mentioned Sophia's name in the past. Many of these faces you recognize. One face you may recognize that left us and now has returned. We recently lost our systems engineer, Ryan Huss, and we were able to capture a former employee and bring him back. And Raul Boudreaux, who is now in a position which we modified to some degree to help us move forward in our service delivery. Raul oversees our systems infrastructure. Chris Selenia, who you all know, oversees our technical services area, which is essentially our help desk IT services, day-to-day operations. And then Shelley Welter oversees our application services area, and I'll speak to all those in a few minutes.
Thomas, Judy's last name really dot com?
It is.
It is.
You're right. I'm done with my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate it.
It was like a bet.
I was over here griping when you guys were talking and she's keeping me in line now, so.
Oh, we're getting punchy.
Sorry, Tom. The floor is yours.
Um, and I may have mentioned this a little earlier, but IT is a centralized service. We provide direct and indirect services to the organization and to the community. And I'll explain that in a few slides. And we align those services, again, with our strategic priorities. Some of the core services that we do provide that we work with on a day-to-day basis, obviously our help desk support for our daily operations, we provide application training, licensing support, and integration services. It's those systems that we can tie together to share data, produce data that we need and integrate with and leverage the technology better. We also manage all the end-user devices. We do all the infrastructure planning and management of that and disaster recovery. We also provide centralized and coordinated GIS services. You're going to hear GIS quite a bit in the next few weeks. It's leveraged in several areas of our operations. It is managed out of IT as a coordinated project or product, and it utilized by many. We also do procurement. We spend a lot of time procuring equipment and managing software and procuring software. As you see many of those backgrounds come forward for approvals, we do that on a regular basis. We also deliver services in coordination and in partnership with other outside organizations. I've listed several of them here, the DBB, of course, the DCC, CGEN, which is our Criminal Justice Information Network Partners, Logis, who is our technology consortium we're a member of, and Dakota County, and then the state of Minnesota also. We also provide, we also partner with local organizations, the school district, obviously Burnsville Community Television. We provide direct services for ABLE fire training facility that is shared amongst four different cities, including Burnsville. The CBB, Twin Cities Catalyst Music Group, we provide some services to them, along with the AIM Center and the MVTA. So we have partnerships and regular contact with those organizations. You may ask, how do we accomplish as much as this? We use, utilize a lot of third parties. We use contractors, consultants, of course. And then we also use Logis technology, IT services. And then we also are leveraging a lot of hosted services and hosted systems. We have 40-plus hosted services today that we leverage and growing. As we go through the replacements of systems that we have in-house that we've traditionally taken care of in here, the first and foremost thing we're looking at is how can we host those third-party before we bring them back in-house? If we can't find a satisfactory solution, we'll bring it back in-house, but we try not to do that. That allows us to spend more time on other activities rather than maintaining daily operational items. Again, our three areas in our group in IT that deliver services is our infrastructure services area. Right now, that's a one-person show. That's Raul Boudreaux and myself. I backfill on infrastructure. We have a whole litany of items that we maintain and manage in that area. Technical services is our busy area. That's our daily help desk services. And then our application services area. This is where we deliver applications either in-house or through hosted services. And then we also look and work with departments who have their own hosted services, and we, we partner with those departments. So IT may not deliver that hosted solution. A department may be buying that service, but we, we work with them on integrations and training and leveraging that technology as much as possible. So we're involved in every asset of it. Our impact in the organization, we exist in all city operations and we're part of most new projects that move forward. We are involved in projects we never thought we would be involved in previous years. It's just a natural transition of how technology is progressing. You've heard terms like Internet of Things. There really is every, if it, if it's a new technology, it plugs in somewhere or it's using wireless service somewhere. Our team does take pride in providing those services and trying to leverage as many efficiencies and making the services that we deliver as valuable as possible to the organization. Our team is very good at working together and with others, and we want to be able to do more. That, but we have limits on what we can accomplish. We participate in 60 to 80 projects annually, capital projects that mostly are initiated by IT, but we're also part of other non-IT capital projects initiated by other departments. Many are initiated out of the Public Works Group, and we're involved in many of those. Our inventory of systems and devices and items in general is going to exceed, and this number is actually incorrect, it's over 3,500 by 2023. So we'll have a, a litany of items that we're going to be bringing in between now and 2023 that we're going to have to continue to bring into our inventory of responsibility and maintain. And that's, that's, IT is generally, it's not a, a set it and get it, or forget it type of service. We have to maintain everything we bring in. So that's, that's a challenge for us when we bring in more and more. How's our, how are we evolving? We've talked a little bit about this. We do provide 24 by 7, 365-day on-call service to the organization. We do it on an on-call emergency basis. If you need your password changed at midnight, they're probably not going to respond very easily to you on that. But if, if it's a system down and it's production system, especially in our areas of public safety, water utilities, the AIM Center, if there's an event, or if there's other activities going on outside of regular business hours, we're on-call. And we, we've managed those, and that, that has evolved since, really, we started providing on-call services in 1998 when we brought in our first dispatch center system. And we didn't formalize our on-call policy and procedures until 2014. We really went, went in 2014 because of the, the nature and the amount of activities going on after hours. So we, we always provided public safety on-call service since 1998, but it really was formalized just within the last decade. So we do have a policy and a procedure to follow in that regard. And obviously, the other evolution of things is the number of devices that everybody has issued and uses in their day-to-day jobs, not only in this organization but in the community at large. The expectations have grown because of that, and the access to information is more quickly needed and readily available. And then the life cycles of equipment are, are shortening. So what we used to replace every five to seven years, we're now replacing every three to four, and in many cases, even sooner than that. Mobile phones is a good example. We have the ability to replace mobile phones every one to two years. The question is, should we and why should we? But in many cases, it's just the nature of the business and the, the technology and what we can do with it if we continually improve on it. And then we want to continue to focus on our core services, but we're also evolving into focusing more on hosted services that third parties can deliver to us. But there's still a management component to that. And the management component of hosted services is you have to know how to manage that system just like it's in-house, because you still are responsible for security, you're still responsible for the data protection, you're still responsible for leveraging it as much as possible. Just to give you a little sense of our growth, I use the timeline that was established in the org's services analysis. And from 2006 to 2021, the dotted line is the number of devices that we've implemented over the years, the number of systems and devices and items that we, we've taken on and are responsible for. And this is that 3,500 number that I mentioned earlier. So through 2021, we're just under the 3,000 mark. We're going to be tipping over that and plus more. And really what's put us on that is every year, we're adding more and more things. The fire station build is a good example of that. We went from a, a fire station with about 10 computers, three display TVs, one remote for station alerting, maybe four security cameras and five door access controls to a very large facility with 55 computers, 50 displays, station remote control for station alerting in every room in the building, full security, 25 cameras, and on and on and on. So that just gives you an example of how we can accelerate the number of things that we have to maintain and leverage. In addition to that, the blue graph here is our IT help desk in the last, since 2017. What that represents is we implemented a new help desk system in 2017, so that's the valid data we have from that platform. From 2017 to 2021, we've seen a 17, a 27% increase in our help desk. And then about 28% increase in our, in number of systems that we, we maintain over that same period of time. And then just in the last two years, because of COVID, we saw a 16% increase in our help desk due to just the nature of working from home and remote work. It really just increased our number of calls and, and needs by our staff because it was a large transition for them coming from in the building, from a cubicle to home and working from home overnight. It, it really turned things upside down a little bit for a while.
Well, your remote assist must have been very busy.
We were.
Remote assist.
Yes.
With everybody working remotely and then have issues and then you have to fly in to fix it.
Fortunately for us, because we, we had an advanced mobile environment, because again, when we implemented primarily our water utility improvements back in 2008, 2009, that really established the infrastructure to allow us to do a lot of mobile deployments for staff. So we had a full water utility group that had laptops in the field. We've got inspectors with laptops in the field. Of course, our police and fire systems are, are mobile in the field. The change that really occurred since 2020 was everybody else, getting everybody else mobilized. And that was about a 57% increase in, in remote users when we did that. So substantial change. What this graph does, it shows you, and I'm not going to go through all the detail of it, but it shows you that same timeline from 2006 to 2022. And the boxes contain what I would call significant IT services that we added in those years. And these are services of systems or applications and services that occurred. And then it shows below that, the years that we added IT staff. And what you're, what you'll see there is that in 2006, that was our last help desk person that we added, and that was John Sidnas, if you all know John. He was our last help desk person we've added. We have not added a help desk person since 2006. In 2010, where we added an FTE, if you all remember Linda Glor, who Linda.
Yeah.
Managed our tower assets in 2007. She was a part of the engineering department.
Yeah.
IT, she moved into IT. So IT took on a position, took on a responsibility, a, a new service, and they didn't backfill that position in engineering. So in total, the city lost a position. IT added a position, but it was just a lateral move in, from engineering. And then in 2017, we did add one new position, and that was an IT analyst.
They brought in all of that work and asset base.
We brought in our fiber infrastructure. We joined the DCC. We, we added all kinds of services. And really, we're up to nine staff today as of 2018. But the number of services in each year is in the last 16 years has really been significant. How do we compare? We did a, we took five of our metro market cities and just did a quick comparison. Several of these cities provide similar IT services and several unique IT services. I would call, we're a little unique in the, in, in the terms of, we're advanced in terms of our SCADA platform, our fiber infrastructure, our telecommunications leasing. That's just not an activity that goes on in other cities under IT. Typically, that's an activity that goes on under Public Works or engineering. Many of these cities have no full-time fire or EMS services. Some do here, Edina does, and St. Louis Park does. With those comparisons, the slide I want to show you next gives you an idea. These are the numbers that were from the org analysis too for, in terms of the population, the full, the full-time equivalent employees, and then the number of FTE, IT FTEs each of these organizations has. But the, the last column is the one that I wanted to point out. So all of us are, these five cities, including Burnsville, are, are all Logis members for different IT services. This is based on the 2022 Logis budget that each city planned for. If you can see, Burnsville's highlighted in blue there, our budget was about $95,000. The primary amount of money that we spend with Logis annually is our, for our police and fire mobiles. And then we also use them for special assessment software, for doing our special assessments. And then we do buy some other IT managed services, a, a smaller amount. But the, there's a significant difference in the budgets and the amount that these other market cities spend on Logis services with a, a similar number of FTE, IT FTEs. And they're buying services that are application services. Police and Fire Mobile's a good example. But I'll, I'll just identify like Egan. Egan's 2022 budget there, about $850,000. That includes financial, financial system, HR payroll, community development, permitting, recreation management, all those platforms that we have in-house today that we manage in-house. So they're, they're supplementing their IT group with those additional services from Logis. And it just gives you a, a context of the amount of services that we're providing similar to those organizations, but what they're getting through a different service organization, in this case, Logis.
Yeah.
What are we using for all the departments that they use Logis for? What are we using?
Most of those, so again, I'll use Egan as an example. Those systems I mentioned that Egan's using through Logis, we have in-house and we manage those in-house with our IT group today.
I mean, are we, do we have custom software that we wrote or that we're using?
Off-the-shelf software?
Gotcha.
Yep. So we may have, in our, in our case, our financial ERP platform, our finance system platform, we've had in-house for many years, and we continue to upgrade it and manage it through the vendor that we have a relationship with. As we go through the lifecycle replacements of those systems, we're looking at third parties like a Logis to look at their platforms and see if they would satisfy our needs. They may not satisfy our needs and we may decide to keep those in-house. But today, just as a comparison, this is where we stand today as compared to some of our market cities.
What would the total be of all those other SaaS models or software added to the 95? So it's more of an apples-to-apples? Like, we spend 95 with Logis, but we're only buying one app, one, one application. But if you add in all what, what we spend on all those other applications, are we ever, are we anywhere near what these cities are that really are, are using Logis as the resource for all of those departments?
So when we purchase technology, our cost is usually the capital cost upfront and then a lower operating cost. Whereas in the Logis model, it's a higher operating cost. So our, our costs are lower as, as a result of having them in-house for the time being. But it's, it's, Logis is providing more of a hosted services model, which is consistent with where we're moving with most systems. But our costs will increase if we start continuing to move that way as it relates to that. We would still need staff to manage those systems and those cha, those changes. So today, with our current in-house systems, we're, we're doing that with the nine FTEs we have.
So Councilmember, to your question, I think the most, the most apples-to-apples comparison line to line in this particular table would be Edina with their, their full-time fire department EMS service. So you're looking at Edina with eight FTEs and IT FTEs compared to, compared to our nine. And Edina's 365-ish thousand dollars worth of Logis investment compared to our 95,000. Really, what we're accomplishing, or what this table would tell me, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, is that with one additional FTE, we're accomplishing what Edina is accomplishing through Logis in about $250,000. through Logis in about $250,000 of investment. So I would say this tells a story that, again, we have some celebration to do around our efficient use of staff and resources. But it also paints the picture that, from an IT support perspective, again, you saw this in the org analysis, that we have an identified administrative gap that we'll have to identify. Is that the addition of FTEs? Have they been proposed? Is it a different approach? And really, the solution that's been suggested is what you've seen in the org analysis, which suggests the addition, Tom, of four? Total FTEs over the course of the five-year period of time?
Four of the next five years, yes.
And the other thing is that you look at Edina, and it's $53,000, and Burnsville is now, with the last census, is at $65,000 from the census report. So you look at all of those things.
Yeah, we're 20% larger in public.
Yeah.
I would also say this is, this represents, our staff spend more time on operational management and maintenance of systems because they're in-house, where we could be spending more time on other new things and strategic items. So it does present some challenges in moving forward and strategic, new strategic initiatives without additional resources.
Well, if I remember correctly also, because when we first started all of this, Tom, when you were hired, we did use Logis, but we also found that Logis was very slow. We were having you and having an in-house service, we moved quicker and more flexible, especially with police and fire, with response.
We've had control over a lot of our choices and our destiny on systems and implementation. And so, yes, when you join a consortium of a larger group, it's, decision-making is by committee and by vote. And moving forward on different initiatives takes longer, and it takes, it's a slower process in general.
And that's why we exit Logis and did it ourselves.
The services that we are leveraging through Logis are good and are excellent. And that's why we always look at them when we're ready to look at replacing systems or solutions as an option for us. But in some cases, we have to make some decisions, what's best for Burnsville. And we tend to either do more in-house because of that, because we think we can do some of those things better, or we look at other options outside of Logis.
Well, we went back with Logis when we went, when we joined the DCC.
Yep.
Some of these conversations too, you know, one of Tom's realities has been looking at the IT department's strategic plan, how we're best serving the organization and the community. And it's one of the things that we've talked quite a bit about through that process, right? How are we best using those FTEs compared to the need that's been identified through the org analysis? And that's work that we hoped to have done, but will continue through this year with, I think that will give us some more clarity on some of this conversation as well, in the continued strategic direction of what's the most effective use of resources from a technology perspective.
I'm going to jump right into the strategic priorities, and I'll try to go through those fairly quickly. As I indicated earlier, we provide core services, and we're a centralized service unit. We do partner with the other departments to make sure that they can leverage their business-specific systems as much as possible. But they have subject matter experts, and we act as liaisons. So we really depend on a lot of departments to lead their own systems. And, but what I wanted to point out with that is that it takes their time and resources then to do that. It's not always an IT initiative. It's a department initiative if it's a specific system to that department only. But we partner with them, and we become more consultants then in that case. Under safety, we deliver obviously quite a bit of safety systems and technologies to further our police and fire services. And our primary services that we provide are for their facilities, their vehicles, their mobility, to deliver services to the community. Some of the future initiatives that we're bringing forward that you've already heard about in some of our previous conversations is our Facility Phase 3 initiatives and the technology that may be involved in those future facilities. Fiber INET expansion. We're going to continue to expand our INET to parks and other amenities in the community. And then we're going to be involved in future emergency notification systems. We are involved in the siren systems here in the city, and we just, we're involved in quite a few safety initiatives ongoing. Under community engagement, we support enterprise systems that allow for a lot of collaborative effort and activities. One of those you see quite often, and that's GIS mapping and the maps that our group helps develop, not only from IT, but within other departments like Public Works, like Communications. Matt Turan leads a lot of that effort. You've seen a lot of the storyboards and the story maps that are published online. That's how we do a lot of outreach to the community. Matt is engaged with a lot of the departments on a regular basis to hear their stories and develop it into some kind of visual geographic spatial beauty that he can make, tell a story very easily. We're also going to continue to engage in online communication tools, like continuing to support and use Zoom and other tools similar to that. In addition to that, we're working currently on other tools for mobile engagement with the community, a mobile app, a 301 type of system where the community can issue requests through a mobile app, now either from their phone or through a web browser, and get better instant feedback on the activity surrounded around that request, a replacement to our request tracker system that's been in place for well over a decade. In addition to that, we're making improvements to our recreation management platform. We want to make that customer experience much better than it is today. That platform's been in place for over a decade also. We're also part of the organizational culture.
May I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Is request tracker still the most efficient tool?
That's a great question, Madam Mayor.
Because it's just, you know, I get complaints about it.
It was a novel idea like 18 years ago, but it needs to be updated, right?
So Tom can speak to the system replacement, but you'll recall about the, three months ago, you approved formal agreements for what will be a new MyBurnsville app. But Tom can explain.
Oh, that's good. When is that rolling out?
Well, our project team is forming, and we've already signed a contract based on the approval that council made over three months ago. And we're moving that forward now. The exact timeline, I do not know, but that'd be a great question for our communications director. They are leading that effort. IT is partnering with them on it. And we're hoping to roll it out early this year. We are, there's two pieces to it. The one is the Burnsville Engagement Mobile App. And along with that, a tool that enhances that called C Click Fix, if you are familiar with that. They're both mobile-based. Where, I'll just give one example. A citizen can literally take a picture of a pothole. It'll geocode it, so we know exactly where the location is. They can submit it quickly and easily, and then watch the progress of the submittal from when it is assigned to when it is worked on and when it is finished. And they'll see the transition through that whole process.
They're not going to be frustrated that, you said that somebody's going to get back to me within 24 hours, and it's been two days.
They'll have.
They'll have full access to that experience.
They'll have full access and transparency to the process in that case.
So C Click Fix will replace Request Tracker. And that project is, as you can imagine, fairly deep within the organization. We use Request Tracker, and the setup is fairly ingrained into the operations of each and every department that we have. So that project team is working together collaboratively to identify, to identify issues, opportunities, and get the, ultimately get the solution implemented. I'll provide you an update this week, I hope, timeline and kind of next steps, but it's something we're actively talking about.
It's very exciting.
Yeah.
I'll reshare the wireframes of it too, because our design staff are knocking it out of the park on the application experience itself with Tom's help.
Very quickly, we have a similar technology in one of our insurance company's claims process. And the mere fact that somebody can see, they compare it to the Domino's Pizza Tracker. But if somebody can see that it's in progress, it takes those points of contact or it lowers them.
Absolutely.
The anxiety.
They're not calling, asking for updates because it's being presented to them proactively.
And to your point, Vince, I actually like the Domino's example. That's a good one.
It's on its way.
We've been talking a lot, and one of my, one of my priorities for the organization is our service to the community isn't just about the community reaching out to us and us reaching back, right? It really is about how are we reaching out to the community ourselves proactively. And I think this exchange is a good example of not only how we can leverage technology, but how we think differently from a staff perspective about the interactions in terms of meeting and anticipating the needs of the community. So an important shift in our evolution.
I like it. Very nice. Okay. I'm glad I asked about it because, you know, we've talked about it, and it's like.
As it relates to organizational culture, we're also making improvements in our onboarding experience for staff. IT is working with HR and their onboarding process. In addition to, we're leveraging new help desk tools to make the onboarding experience much better for new staff and more efficient for everybody involved. We're also in the process of, in the near future, implementing more self-help tools for our staff and leveraging more on-demand training for staff. So they don't have to wait for training. They can just do on-demand training when they want to. It's really, kind of evolves around learning management systems. We're investing in learning management systems that tie into the ability to deliver it through BU, so Burnsville University. So it makes it a much more centralized experience for our staff, but it's delivered by IT in some regards. Community vibrancy. We have some projects already in process that we've talked about previously, but really, the key area that we hit on vibrancy is our development of, expansion of services to parks and our ability to not only provide security services and other building management services to the park facilities that exist, but also some amenities along with that because our infrastructure allows us to do that. In the near future, we're going to be, continue to deliver that. Some of the upcoming projects, Kelleher Park Planning and Design is going on right now, so that's another initiative. North River Hills Park, we're adding irrigation and new shelter in that area. So we're expanding our infrastructure to accommodate that, where we can tie in irrigation control systems into our platforms that exist in those parks already. And then lastly, infrastructure. That's a key one for IT. We provide a lot of infrastructure. We partner on a lot of infrastructure. We've got that 40 miles of infrastructure today that, under our fiber optic umbrella. It really has turned out to be a tool that we can use effectively and efficiently to deliver services throughout the organization. Today, we're at 65 sites and growing that still, as, again, as we deliver more projects to other locations. We intend to continue to roll more activities out, especially as we move forward on Facilities Phase 3 projects. We're going to leverage that infrastructure as well as we can for those projects. And then we are also, we still do have some water utility infrastructure sites that we want to add to our SCADA platform in the future, some what we would call lower priority sites, but still in need of being added to that system. And then last but not least, our sustainability efforts. We are involved in using tools, as Ryan indicated earlier, to help our sustainability efforts, our asset management tools. We also have what are called print management tools. We have a very low number of print devices in this organization. More and more things are electronic-based, and we're continuing to push those efforts as we move forward. What's important to us in IT, obviously, we want to provide excellent service and exceed the needs of the departments and the community where we can. We also want to proactively manage our assets that we maintain and engage in initiatives as we can. We also want to make sure that we are providing stability and protection to our platforms as we move forward. Although we implement a lot of things, we always have to keep security in mind as we do those activities. Some of the challenges, very similar to what you've heard from Ryan, are lack of resources to complete our operational tasks. As I mentioned earlier, we haven't really added any IT help desk support since 2006. Really, the only transition we made is in 2016. We added that to Chris Solania's plate to manage that group. So he's a resource to that group, but he's managing that group.
He was just a transfer of function from Public Works to IT.
Chris took on tower asset management, fiber asset management until the DBB came along, and then IT operational management of the help desk at that time.
And all of the antennas.
So, and right now, 5G applications are going very active. We're seeing a lot of activity increase in our telecommunications leasing. We also, because of that, our limited resources and time, we are struggling to bring forward new strategic initiatives and be innovative. It limits our ability to be innovative because we're focused so much on operational activities. So really, our challenge is our skills and our development so that we can innovate and making sure that we're keeping on top of what's going on around us, what we need to be doing, and then leveraging and focusing on service delivery. We also, as a result of that, we spend a limited amount of time on governance and controls. And what does that mean? That means we really, it's the protection of our platforms. It's the standards. It's the inventory controls. It's all the things that help us maintain our inventory and our management of our platforms. We really have to spend quality time on that, and we're just not doing that adequately enough. And as we continue to increase our services and our devices and our platforms, that just continues to become more and more of a challenge. And then the competitive compensation climate has changed, and we've had some recent turnover. You've heard about Ryan Hus. We are actually losing another person. Shelley Walter, our Application Services Manager, is leaving for another opportunity with the MAC, with the Airport Commission. So fortunately, it posed an opportunity for another staff in our group to receive a promotion, but we still are going to have to backfill Jason Myrie's position here. So staff turnover is a challenge, at least recently it has been. I feel good in the fact that we've been able to mentor them to be competitive, to go to competitors and receive opportunities that they may not have been able to receive here. And hopefully, maybe in the future, we'll be able to pull them back in, just like we did with Raul Bujo. But we're experiencing very similar activities that other parts of our organization are, where they're being pulled away by other industry or other partner organizations. With that, I know it's late. We do have some aspirations. We do want to make sure that we want to continue to deliver services and enhance our abilities. And some of the things we do want to be able to do in this, in the future, is focus on smart cities initiatives. We do want to make sure that we can align and reorganize our IT group to best serve the organization and the community. And it's a challenge to do that now without looking at what resources we may need to do those activities. As you see, we have got the same photo there, and I was hoping you were going to ask me about this photo, but Ryan already responded to it.
Would you like to add anything to that?
Well, this is an example of a park amenity that was never on our radar. And what I mean by that, there is a full SCADA platform in that park now to manage the lighting control, audio control, and the water control systems there. And I think parks didn't realize how much they have there either. And that's a good example of infrastructure now that we've invested in that needs to be managed and maintained. And this is the first park we've done this in. I'm just, I'm waiting for the next park that we're going to do it in. But it's a tremendous system, and we've got experience with it. And it leverages that same infrastructure and technology knowledge that we have in the organization. But we really are adding some sophistication to parks now that never existed in all the years that we've had the park system.
And what a playground's going to look like in 20 years? Are you going to have to implement programming into, you know?
LED lighting in every park.
Slides and automated swings.
I mean, you have a lot of technology in that park and in that whole area because of the AME Center, and you have Wi-Fi in all of the parks.
This photograph is a good use here, to Tom's point. This is one of the areas that we struggle with. And I don't, I don't know, we do our best, but I don't know that we have the right solution to put in. right solution to put in front of you, other than we do know that kind of prioritizing and, and focusing on the areas that are most important has left some angst and consternation on the staff side of things on how we manage important projects like this one, particularly how we, how we maintain those systems and deliver great service through them. Said another way, I, I believe that Tom would love to volunteer to make sure that that happens, but the capacity hasn't been there. And that exists in recreation and in public works, and this is a really good example of a, of an area of frankly, challenge for us.
Through the org analysis study, our initial request is to backfill or shore up our, our help desk operations, to help us deal with the day-to-day platforms and systems that we are taking a lot of our time away. As we talked about earlier, I'm rolling up my sleeves and putting on my help desk hat on a daily basis and answering a lot of those calls to help backfill the need in our group. And I, we really need to be more strategic and innovative in our activities. And my management staff in IT really would want to be able to do that too, but they are really focused on the daily operations. To that point, the, the transition or the plan would allow us to move those activities into where they should be with the additional resources that we would receive.
This is very good. I did not realize that the last help desk hire was John. I, I know you have, you're very slim downstairs.
Yeah, really, the significant changes that we've had were in the application groups. That's where we've added resources since 2006. But really, the help desk has not increased staffing levels since 2006.
And we're a much bigger organization with a lot more needs.
Yep.
I wish I had heard this information at this depth at least one time in the last four years.
Now, things have changed.
This has been, you and Ryan both, one of the most meaningful presentations I've had, because I didn't know about a lot of the things you guys talked about tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, because it's about the leadership and giving us the information we need. We can't help you get to your aspirations and to understand the challenges if we don't know. So this is good.
I know that Bethany and Tom would, would tell you this themselves. I had very little to do with it, other than asking them to do it.
Take credit for something.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of staff work that's gone into this, and it's very important to me, Mayor, and to us, that you have the information that you need. And we're going to continue to get creative and scrappy about how we do that.
Yeah.
This is a wonderful launching point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then the, and next two, and that, is that next week?
Next week. We actually have three to get through things. So we have police, fire, and communications community engagement.
Whoa, the two huge ones.
There'll actually be some, some synergy there, and I think we'll be able to.
Car, APD, and fire, it all.
Efficiently and effectively talk about some important issues with those groups together.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. With that, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.